Okay, everybody. It is 6:30 on the dot. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Mulberry City Council. Tonight is a regular meeting. And so before we go in, as always, I believe the clerk has put extra copies of the agenda on the podium. If you'd like one, feel free to take one. Also, because this is a regular meeting, we will have public comments. So on the podium as well, there is a notebook, if you don't mind, or if you could just sign your name. And when we get to public comments, she'll read the names and you'll be happy to listen to your public comments. So, all right, we don't have a minister again tonight to do the invocation, so we're going to go straight to item C, the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you're able, please stand in court.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I'm going to go ahead, as I do every week, and I'm going to call the roll. I'm going to do it in order of districts. District one is Councilman Tim Sullivan.
Present.
District two is Michael Cobre. That is me. I'm present. District three is Councilman Kyle Shields.
Present.
District four is Councilman and Mayor Pro Tem Michael Rudnick. And then District five is Councilman Doug Ingram.
Present.
All right, Madam Clerk, if you could notate that four out of the five council members are present. And I promised the Mayor Pro Tem that I would tell everybody. So the Mayor Pro Tem has been down at the Georgia State Capitol all day today, in part because some of those Mulberry bills we talked about last week moved through the Senate today. And one of the bills, SB 138, actually passed in the Senate. So he was down there. And so he is sitting in rush hour traffic coming home. You might see him pop in, you might not, depending how bad I-85 is this afternoon, okay? So just wanted to give everybody that update. The next thing is the mayor's opening comments. We have a couple things on the agenda tonight that are pretty important. We're going to go over, talk about some new ordinances in the city, some various things. Obviously, we'd be more than happy to discuss any of them with you after the meeting, if anybody'd like to. But basically, right now, it should be a relatively short meeting. It should move pretty quickly. And so it should be something that we should be able to get wrapped up relatively quickly. Do any of the other council members have any comments they want to make this evening?
No, I do not.
Okay. Hearing none, we will go ahead and consider tonight's agenda. Is there any items, council members, that need to be added or removed from tonight's agenda?
I do have two items, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Ingram says he has two items. What two items would you suggest be added or taken away from the agenda?
The first item is, I'd like to make a motion, or add to the agenda, I should say, a item authorizing the mayor to decrease the general liability limit from currently what we have, which is $1 million to $2 million. This is in regards to the sublease that we have for the space and some of the requirements that are notated by our ultimate landlord.
Okay, we'll discuss that. That'll be under Action Item L. We'll make that item D. Discussion of the city's liability limits?
Second item I'd like to add to the agenda is a change to the scope of services for Mr. Chuck Button. So as you know, the last council meeting we had, we had a contract that we had ratified. We need to make an amendment to that contract to change the title from city manager to senior advisor to the city of Mulberry.
Okay, I'm going to add item D, if it's okay. Councilman Ingram, just discussion of Chuck Button contract. Is that okay with you?
Sounds great.
Okay. Okay, so that'll be item E, under Action Items L. Any other items need to be added or taken away?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to disband the Service Delivery Committee and also the Hazard Mitigation Committee, because we just don't need them anymore.
Okay, so let's add Action Item L. Before you make your motion, let's add just a discussion, discussion of necessity of Service Delivery Committee. So Service Delivery Strategy Committee and...
Hazard Mitigation Committee.
And the Hazard Mitigation Plan Committee. Okay, gentlemen, I hear three additions. Is there any other additions or deletions from tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none, I will make a motion to add item D under the Action Items, Discussion of the City's Liability Limits. Action Item E, Discussion of the Chuck Button Contract, and Action Item F, Discussion of the Necessity of Service Delivery Strategy Committee and the Hazard Mitigation Plan Committee. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Thank you. Councilman Sullivan, any other discussion about those three items? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, the amendments are added. Do I have a motion to adopt the February 20th, 2025, agenda as amended?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight as amended.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Ingram, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilman Shields, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right. The February 20th, 2025, meeting agenda as amended is hereby adopted. Okay, moving on to item H, which is a consideration of the February 6, 2025 minutes. Has the council had the opportunity to review the February 6, 2025 minutes as prepared by the clerk? Okay, is there any changes or additions or omissions from those minutes? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes from February 6, 2025, the Mulberry City Council minutes from that date. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of four, the Mulberry City Council regular meeting minutes for February 6, 2025 are hereby adopted. All right, moving on. Item I, Consideration of the February 13th, 2025 minutes. Has the council had a sufficient time to review those minutes? Okay, any additions, changes, or omissions to those minutes? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion for these minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the minutes from February 13th, 2025, as stated here.
Thank you. Councilman Ingram, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmen. Do any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of four, the minutes from the Mulberry City Council Special Poll Meeting for February 13th, 2025 are hereby adopted. All right, the next item up is item J, Public Comments. I don't know if anybody signed up for public comments. I don't think I saw anybody come up. No? Would anybody like to make a public comment? Mr. Hughes, would you like to come forward? Sure, thank you. And let me say this too. I know Mr. Hughes is a regular, so he knows this. Public comments, you're limited to two minutes per public comment. The clerk is going to keep time. Just so you know, the council will not respond. I've been chastised in the past that I, it's not supposed to be a question and answer session. This is just, we're happy to answer your questions after the meeting. This is just for you to make a comment and then us to listen. So we won't respond to public comments at this time.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. On January the 5th of this year, a notice was of intent to introduce legislation to amend the Mulberry Charter was placed in the Gwinnett County Post. After that notice was placed, there were several meetings of the Mulberry City Council in the remainder of January. However, no mention was made of the notice of intent in those meetings. On Friday, February the 7th, the city of Mulberry released an agenda for a special called meeting to be held on Thursday, February 13th. That agenda made no reference to the three pieces of legislation sponsored by Senator Clint Dixon in the Georgia Senate, known as SB 137, 138, and 139. On Monday, February 10th, the public was made aware of the January 5th notice of intent. And on Wednesday, February 12th, two days after the public was made known of the notice of intent, the city of Mulberry issued a revised agenda for the special February 13th meeting. This revision included references to SB 137, 138, and 139. As a citizen, both of the city of Mulberry and Gwinnett County, I have questions about each of these bills. Tonight, I would like to express my concerns about one of these bills in particular. That is SB 139. This bill will annex approximately 188 properties into the city of Mulberry. If passed, this will be done by the state legislature without first having consulted and obtained the consent of the landowners. The wording of SB 139 makes it extremely difficult to determine exactly what parcels are being annexed. It fails to give the name of the property owner, a parcel address, if there is one, and a parcel ID number of the affected property. While this may be legal, in my opinion, it is dishonest. This action has been defended by the city council as necessary to protect the city of Mulberry from Gwinnett County. But who is to protect the owners of land being annexed into the city without their knowledge or consent? I have lived in Gwinnett for over 35 years. I cannot recall Gwinnett zoning property without giving the surrounding property owners proper written notice. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Any other public comments this evening? All right, hearing none, I will go ahead and close the public comments for this evening. All right, that go ahead, that brings us to item K, which is a second read of an ordinance regarding the land development regulations. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah McQuade. She is here on behalf of Rebecca Kiefer to talk a little bit more about this ordinance, what it is, and the continued rollback of that moratorium that's in place. Ms. McQuade?
Yes, so great to be here, Mayor Council, second time, so it's nice to continue to see y'all. The first item I'm going to talk about is the second read of the amendment to Chapter 34. That is an ordinance that will adopt the model ordinance of the state related, as it relates to soil erosion and supplementation control and pollution controls. This is part of the requirements for the city to obtain their local issuing authority status, which will allow inspectors to, well, A, us to review plans related to land disturbance, and then B, conduct inspections as related to them. This is a revision requested by the state to our application. They have reviewed the draft ordinance, as I mentioned, last week, and they have no comments regarding it. It is acceptable to them at this time. And there's been really no changes since I was here last week. But I am happy to answer any questions that you may have related to it.
Any questions from the council? Councilman Ingram does not have a question.
Good grief, what's going on?
All right, so just to clarify, so this is, this is an amendment to our previous ordinance that will basically, is what the state is requesting for us to get that local issuing authority?
Yes, that is correct. And once, if you do choose to vote on it, we will send the application in tomorrow. And that will hopefully be a quick turnaround.
Perfect. Okay, that having been said, I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-02-136, the amendment to Chapter 34 of the Land Development Regulations, as discussed. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Thank you. Councilman Sullivan, any discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of four, ordinance number 2025-02-136 is hereby adopted. Okay, that brings us to Action Items L. Okay, the first one is Resolution 2025-0227. So as many of you who know, if you've been, if you've been here for past meetings, one of the past discussions that we had was we had hired a consultant through the Georgia Municipal Association that helps new cities set up the, what are the telecom franchise fees, okay? So basically, as part of the agreement with these specific providers for allowing cable, telephone lines to come through our city, they are required to basically pay us. Think of it as a lease, basically, for their lines to come through the city. We have hired GMA, and I will present Resolution Number 2025-0227 as a resolution that GMA has asked us, the GMA contractor, has asked us to pass, which deals specifically with those cable and video franchise fees, and that would allow us to, the contractor to go to the providers and for us to begin collecting those fees. Is there any discussion about Resolution 2025-0227?
A question I have, Mr. Mayor, is the percentage of the franchise fee, I think that's a pretty standard number that GMA has recommended, right?
It is, yeah. So the 5% is, and I will say that it's my understanding from the GMA representative that these are fees that are traditionally, have been in our, collected by the county, that will now go to the city, is my understanding. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-0227. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilman Ingram, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of four, Resolution 2025-0227 pertaining to the establishment of franchise fee applicable to holders of cable and video franchises issued by the state of Georgia is hereby adopted. All right, that brings us to Action Item B, which is Resolution 2025-0228, Amending the Moratorium Adopted January 3rd, 2025 for All Building Permit Types. Sarah, I'm going to turn this back over to you.
Yes, sir. As you stated, this is another relaxation of the moratorium that the city adopted during their, right at the beginning. And this will be a relaxation to allow all building permit types. We are working closely with Sages to develop the plan review and the, it also ties to the approval of the local issuing authority. But we anticipate that won't be an issue. Currently, we are, you know, issuing some building permits that went live yesterday. I know there is that issue with the web address on the website, but we've been in contact with InterDev to get that corrected. Essentially, there just doesn't need to be that period. There's just a typo there. So they're working to correct that. And the occupational tax banner that is currently showing when customers go to the website will change to a building permit one. So currently, we've accepted eight permit requests between yesterday and today, and that's for two trade permits and six building permits. And those permits that are currently being issued are the ones that were previously relaxed in the moratorium. Those are the ones that weren't issued by Gwinnett County, because there was some minor thing remaining and did not require us to conduct any plan reviews. So that is going really well. Sages did a great time building out that permitting software, and we're really excited to get the plan review process set up. The inspection process will be great as well. So it's not as fast as we anticipated, that March 5th date, if I haven't stated that yet. We were hoping to go live a week from today, but after discussions with Sages and making sure that we really had the plan review and application process smoothed out, they recommended doing that additional week. But we're in communication with a lot of applicants, and so far, things have gone really well. Do you have any questions about it?
So just so I understand, because obviously, we get a lot of calls about this. Obviously, I know that it says specifically that it still doesn't apply to land disturbances, right?
That's correct.
So obviously, that will be the application that we previously did. But I understand for larger scale properties, there still is the option for them to go through the Soil and Water Conservation District, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And then we will be able to, they will authorize the soil erosion and supplementation control. And then with this relaxation that allows us to do the plan review, we'll be able to review the plans. And so it'll kind of be a joint effort until that LA is achieved.
Okay, but apart from that, apart of the, us, the city now having to work in tandem with, I guess, the Athens, the regional office, this should be, everybody should be able to keep their projects moving?
That is correct.
Correct? Okay, got it.
Yes.
All right, any other questions from the council? I agree. I agree. You guys have done, CPL has done a phenomenal job, so thank you.
Thank you. We're really happy to be here.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other discussion about Resolution 2025-0228, Amending the Moratorium that was adopted January 3rd for all building permit types? All right, hearing none, I would like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2025-0228, Amending the Moratorium, which we adopted on January 3rd, 2025, to include all building permit types.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of four, Resolution 2025-0228 is adopted, which amends the moratorium for all building permits types. All right, moving on to item C, which is Resolution 2025-0229, which is to adopt a daily spending limit. One of the things that we have in the city is, obviously, we have expenses that pop up. I think I made the joke last week, something we didn't even realize, like, who buys the toilet paper for the city, right? I mean, things like that, you don't think about. And so we obviously have employees that work here in the office that are going to be authorized to make certain purchases up to a certain amount, right, that they are allowed to do on their city cards, basically. So there's a, excuse me, there's a resolution in front of you, Resolution 2025-0229, just as we discussed last time, when we talked about the authorizations, there is no amount filled in as far as what the, we need two numbers to fill in, Councilman, which is basically, number one would be, what is the individual spending limit for any individual purchase on these cards? And then number two, what is the daily spending limit for this card? Does anybody have a suggestion or an idea of what that number should be, those two numbers?
Mr. Mayor, what's the limit right now that we have for you at these $1,000?
Yeah, so right now, basically, I am authorized to approve any, any purchase that is under $1,000 without coming to council for approval. And I want to be clear, they would still have to do this under this resolution. So even if they want to go buy toilet paper, they still would have to call me, text me, email me?
Or the pro tem, correct?
Or the pro tem, correct, and say, am I authorized to make this purchase? And we would still approve it, but this will, this will cap the amount of the spending limit for any one individual purchase, as well as the daily limit.
I don't know. I guess maybe to Madam Clerk, in terms of what our expenses are right now, do you, like, what is it, 200, 300? I mean, I have an idea how much toilet paper and eggs cost. We won't get into the cost of eggs right here, but do you have any idea what, like, what the expenses are?
Mr. Eller, do you have a, do you have a recommendation on your part, what you would recommend? So this is Stephen Eller in the back, ladies and gentlemen. He is, he's with CKH. He's handling our finance administration. Do you have any personal recommendation of the numbers you would like to see in those, in there?
Not necessarily a firm recommendation, but I'd say anywhere between $500 and $1,000 as a limit. I'm not saying that it would even regularly be in that range. And then maybe the daily spending limit would be some multiple of that, or if you said, you know, $1,000, $2,000, something like that. But I'd say that could be all.
Maybe $500 and $2,000.
So, oh, look. All's going to have to come back to you anyway. Perfect timing. Our resident municipal expert just walked in. So we are, so we are, we are discussing, Mayor Pro Tem, the daily individual spend limit for the purchasing cards, the P cards, for any one individual purchase, plus the daily spending limit. Do you have any, Mr. Eller just recommended maybe $500 as an individual purchase, and then maybe a $2,000 or so for a daily spend limit? I mean, what are your thoughts on that?
Those numbers seem reasonable. I'll give you a backstory. When I came to Lawrenceville five years ago, our spend limit that we had before we had to go to council as staff was $250. So what that means, anything we purchased above $250 had to go before council. So if we needed, as a fleet director, if I needed heavy duty breaks, I had to go to city council, which is kind of crazy. There was a bit of disconnect between council and staff at that point. Our limit now is $2,500, a single purchase with no approval on our purchase card, which is tremendously helpful in allowing us to run our businesses within the city. So to have a $500 individual purchase limit, and you said a $2,000, yeah, I think that sounds reasonable, and we can always change that if we see fit. And that's going to apply to staff, is that right?
Correct. And I, before you walked in, I had mentioned too, so they, they still are required to get approval from either you as the mayor pro tem and me as the mayor. This would just authorize, this is the actual authorization on the cards themselves.
So I would tell council just to keep in mind that the lower that limit is, the slower our business will be, and the longer it will take to get the mundane activities of council business done. So 500 may be a good place to start, and maybe in 90 days, we look at raising that limit, or maybe in six months, once we see the amount of traffic that's coming across the council desk.
I mean, do you prefer maybe 1,000 as the, as the individual purchase limit, and then 2,000 as the daily limit? I mean, we could raise the individual purchase limit if we felt like that was more appropriate.
So when you say individual purchase limit versus daily purchase limit?
So these are actually, the bank will set on their cards. If they go to buy a $700, whatever it is, it will be declined, if it's not, if it's over whatever that limit is.
Yeah. So paramount to that is going to be getting a purchase policy in place as well. And that will be up to our city management staff to do so, and to pass that through the council. So I would put that down as a priority for staff to get that, that policy in place.
Jamie, do you have anything on the numbers?
I, I think Mayor Pro Tem's in line with what my thinking would be. I mean, I think if we set it at 500 and 1,000 for right now, and then revisit it in 90 days, that gives us an idea of seeing what cash flow looks like and what our expenses may be. And then from there, we can adjust as necessary.
Now, I work in a much more robust city, but if I had to go before council for everything I bought about $500, I would spend weeks at council.
True, yeah. You're in charge of a large department.
I am, I am. And, you know, we'll see. You know, I can tell you that we'll see. I don't have a problem starting low, but we may need to adjust that in a short order.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion on those numbers for this Resolution 2025-0229?
I can, I can make a motion. I'd make a, yeah. I think that's, I think that's, okay. Yeah. I'd make a motion on, to, for Resolution 2025-0229, to adopt a daily spending limit. We need to fill in, I guess, the motion would be to have a
Individual purchase.
Individual purchase. Purchase limit of $750, and a daily spending limit of $2,000.
Okay, there's a motion on the table for the, the individual purchase limit for $750, and the daily limit to be 2,000. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, it's unanimous that the, this Resolution 2025-0229, that the, we will go ahead and fill in, the individual purchase limit will be $750, and the daily spend limit will be $2,000. All right, and then All right, now that those numbers are filled in, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-0229 as amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, it's unanimous that the Resolution 2025-0229, which includes the, both the individual purchase limit and the daily spending limit, is hereby adopted. All right, that brings us to item number D, which was amended, which is a discussion of the city's liability limits. Councilman Ingram says this was on your motion. I'll let you talk about it and then kind of advise us of your thoughts.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Briefly, so just as a background on the space that we're occupying now, so this space used to be occupied by Tender Ones Therapy. It used to be a 5,000 square foot space. The owners of that business were kind enough to sublet 3,500 square feet, and we were able to put up a wall. So that's kind of the background of this space. They continue to be on the master agreement, the master lease with the property owner, which is a private equity kind of entity.
which is a private equity kind of entity in, in Ohio, I believe. So as we came into this, our agreement is with the, is with Tender Ones Therapy, but the property owner, for just practical purposes, we wanted to have their sign off as well. And so the private equity owner, which owns the building, is happy to allow us to, you know, be a subletter through Tender Ones Therapy, but they had asked that we carry a two million dollar general liability policy, or two million dollar general liability insurance vehicle. Per occurrence, we currently have a one million dollar per occurrence general liability limit through GMA. So the, the discussion is, can we modify our current insurance to fulfill the requirements of the property owner, the building owner?
Hey, I'm guessing you haven't had any discussion with Germa that they offer a ten million limit?
I, I have, so, 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 so just to provide some further background. So I've, I've, I allowed Germa that, just to talk with the property owner individually, because I wanted them to kind of work it out. Because certainly we don't want any headwaters with this space that we occupy. There, they came back and they said, look, all of the items in the agreement with the property owner are fine. We can get through it, except this general liability item. The cost to us from a premium standpoint is, currently, we have, excuse me, currently, we have a cost of eight thousand three hundred and thirty one dollars for our current insurance policy, which is the million dollar per occurrence. Our premium would go to ten thousand dollars in ten thousand and fifteen. So we're gonna experience approximately seventeen hundred and seventeen fourteen increases.
A hundred and forty something a month.
Cool, yeah.
Any thoughts or discussions about that from the council members?
Kind of sounds like we have to.
I mean, I think, I, the, the background on this is the property owners are, I, I don't believe they're classified as a REIT, but they do own quite a bit of property. So I don't know that we're probably going to be successful in changing their opinion. They originally wanted to have us add it, add them as an additional insured, but they're okay as long as we just change the policy limits, so. Right now, the relationship's a good one, but I, I would strongly encourage council that we probably need to change the policy limits to keep the space and to, you know, be in good stead going forward.
I'll also add, as somebody who practices law, that, that there has been a couple of very large jury verdicts against cities as of late. I don't know for those of you that follow the news, so it's not, it's never a bad thing to have more insurance, right? Because if, if the jury verdict were to exceed what the insurance level of what we provide, then the city could potentially have to come out of pocket and pocket, you know, any, anything in addition. So I, you definitely will get an objection from me as far as raising the insurance.
Value standpoint, the first million's eighty three hundred, the second million's seventeen hundred. I mean, it's pretty good value.
You're right. It's just your odds of getting a, you know, a claim in that second million obviously go down substantially.
For sure, for sure.
Any other discussions about that?
Think Germa's, Germa can offer that policy?
They can, yeah, they're happy. In fact, I talked with her just the other day. That's why I wanted to go ahead and kind of rush it, get it on the agenda, because I'd like to keep the property owner happy and the sub, you know, just make sure that we continue to move along. So they can, they can change the, the liability limits, it's no problem. I think she said they go all the way up to five million dollars, so this is a change to.
Okay.
I would just want to add, I think this is kind of in line with what other cities are looking at, just because it's, like you've mentioned, some other court cases that are going on right now. And there is some legislation going through the General Assembly to kind of address this. So this would kind of allow for flexibility, as well as if an incident were to happen, you know, if that bill were to pass, it would meet the cap, so.
Perfect, thank you. Is there any discussion, Assistant City Manager, what that cap would be at the legislature?
The, the bill currently right now is HP one thirty two, and I think the cap would be right around a million dollars. So that's for any kind of liability incident that would happen inside of a right.
So if we were to increase to two million, that allows for the flexibility for what?
Yeah, yeah. The one issue with my face is that if Germa, if they do pass that cap, right, then Germa may reduce their liability limits for everybody to a million, because no city has liability above a million, right? So, but I think for right now, we're probably in good shape with senior until that bill. We may have to revisit this once that bill passes, is what I'm saying. All right, I will entertain a motion, if you'd like.
So I would like to present a motion, which would change the city's general liability per occurrence limit from one million dollars to two million dollars, with an increased cost on that premium from eight thousand three hundred and thirty one dollars to ten thousand and fifteen dollars.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All right.
Councilman Riley asks, does that motion include the authorization for the mayor to go ahead and sign any documents to effectuate that?
Thank you, Mr. Riley, yes. Correct, thank you. So do any of you recite the motion?
As long as you, you made that clear, and the second made that clear, that that was there in ten all, so that's fine.
Yes, correct, and then the second is on that motion, okay. And so, any discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of five, the city is authorized to raise their liability limits from one million to two million through the Government Interlocutory Risk Management Association.
Something like that.
Yeah, yeah. Insurance, insurance agreement, and then the mayor is authorized to execute any contracts or agreements as to the same. All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving on to item, action item E, which was added, which is a discussion of the Chuck Button contract. Councilman Ingram, since you've kind of taken the lead on this, I'll also return to you, if that's okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just the, the background on Mr. Button. So we're excited that we now have an Assistant City Manager, Jamie. And so, we discussed this last week. We also intended to extend an offer to Mr. Chuck Button, who was administrator, you know, has a pretty storied history here in Buena. We thought he could be quite beneficial to the city in our efforts, working alongside Jamie. The position for, for Mr. Button was, that we presented and voted on last week was going to be approximately ten hours a week, so not a significant investment of time. He's, Mr. Button is retired. On further discussion with Mr. Button, he thought that it might be a good, I don't know, good vehicle for him to be more in an advisory capacity. So we allow, with the idea that the Assistant City Manager is fully capable, can conduct business on behalf of the city with the assistance from Mr. Button in a senior advisory capacity. So with Mr. Riley's help, we've changed the agreement, the contract for services. So he is a contractor, and the contract for services for Mr. Button reads nearly the same. With, so the term is the same, the pay that we agreed on is the same, the time commitment's the same. The only changes that were made to that agreement were the title. So the title will now be Senior Advisor to the City of Mulberry. And the scope of services, previously, we had a scope of services that was focused on the city manager will conduct X, Y, Z, so that now his change in scope to he will advise. And so he will provide advisory capability, both to council, mayor, and the Assistant City Manager. And then, and that's, that's it, kind of, that's the, that's where we stand. So I would like us to be able to, potentially, I don't know, Mr. Riley, with your assistance, if we can ratify that or.
If you, all you need to do is have a motion, if you make a motion to amend the contract, send that contract to the clerk already on today, it's, I believe it might have been in the package at this point in time, just to amend it, and it, it, due to the fact it more accurately reflects the will of the council as to what his job description should be.
Okay, okay.
So.
Let me, let me make sure there's no other questions or discussion. Any questions from the council about that? What is the term? That was my question. I know we talked about that last time.
Six months.
Six months, okay.
From his starting date. And I think there's a discussion there about how we can make it coterminous with, with your start dates law.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion to allow for us to amend the contract for services from Mr. Chuck Button, to change his title from City Manager to Senior Advisor to the City of Mulberry with the same term, and the only change being scope of services to be advisory capacity and not managerial capacity.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
See you a second.
Thank you, Councilman Sullivan. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of five, the amendment to the contract with Mr. Chuck Button, changing his title from City Manager to Advisor to the City of Mulberry is hereby adopted.
Senior advisor.
Senior advisor, thank you, to the City of Mulberry, thank you. All right, that brings us to the last action item that we added, which is action item F, which is a discussion of the necessity of the Service Delivery Strategy Committee and the Hazard Mitigation Plan Committee. Councilman Shields, since you were the head, I believe, of one or both of those committees, I'll turn this over to you.
Yeah, we just find that it's not necessary anymore to have both committees due to your transition period. So I'd like to make a motion to disband Service Delivery Strategy Committee and Hazard Mitigation Committee. We just don't have the necessity for it.
Any questions from the council or discussion?
I have a question. Is the idea that we don't, so we still are going to require negotiations, right? With, on the intergovernmental piece, or?
Well, they're, right now, the IGA is kind of on, how do you want to say this bill?
It's on hold.
There you go, okay, thank you.
For our last, right.
I don't know if that was legally proper.
So because it's on hold, there is nothing to negotiate.
Correct, we have a two-year transition period, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the state is, is, is working on with the county, is that correct?
Gotcha, understood, thank you.
Any other questions from the county, I mean, from the council? I will say, on the Hazard Mitigation Plan, the reason, obviously, we've already submitted, this is for the public, we've already submitted our Hazard Mitigation Plan to the county. We have, we have opted into the county's plan, so we are fully involved or working with them. We are operating, if there was an emergency, we have the plan in place that, you know, the City of Mulberry will obviously have the full cooperation of the city, the state, and the county altogether. Regarding service delivery, you know, I certainly understand Councilman Shields' concerns. Have you made attempts, or has there been attempts, to speak with the county?
There, yeah, there's nothing really going on.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion?
I, I do have one more question. So we know that we have with Senator Clem Dixon and what he proposed, that I guess now has been bugged on.
The state bugged it on today, they'll move to the House tomorrow.
So provided that bill gets through, and the bill we're talking about, I think, is Senate Bill one three nine, is that right?
One three eight, maybe.
One three eight?
One three eight.
One three nine is the annexation. Okay, so one three eight goes through. There are certain characteristics that were.
Two thirty eight.
Certain, certain performance characteristics that the county would be obliged to participate and fulfill services. Those services that they fulfill, is there a performance clause on how they perform those services? Meaning, is there a minimum requirement, such that we don't?
The requirement under the transition is to the same level they, as they have over the past two years.
Gotcha, okay.
And this, in this two thirty eight, it, in many instances eliminates the necessity for the, the county's perceived requirement of intergovernmental agreements, because there are other avenues that are now going to be built into state law.
Understood, got it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
All right, do you want to make your motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to disband the Service Delivery Strategy Committee and the Hazard Mitigation Committee.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of five, the Service Delivery Strategy Committee and the Hazard Mitigation Plan Committee are hereby dissolved. All right, that brings us to item M on our agenda, which is the first read of a couple ordinances. The first one is an ordinance relating to third-party inspections. So Sarah, I'll turn it back over to you for that.
Yes, sir. So the state requires municipalities and counties to accept their previous inspections during their permitting process. As part of that state-level ordinance, if a developer chooses to do a third-party inspection rather than using the city inspector, or if the city cannot meet the inspection within two days, they can do, they can opt to do a third-party inspector. As part of the state-level ordinance, we are allowed to charge certain fees in relation to that process. So if the developer chooses to do a third-party inspection while the city could accommodate the inspection, then they can be charged fifty percent of the permitting fees, the total permitting fees. And if they, if we cannot meet the deadline, then their fee is reduced by fifty percent. And this is the total permitting fee, not just the inspection fee. Rebecca wanted to make sure I clarified that to you. And so we have drafted an ordinance that clarifies it. It establishes a process for third-party inspector companies to register with the city. And then we have a list of inspection firms that are approved and can be utilized if somebody were to ask who they can use. For this first year, we've set that deadline as April thirtieth for the people to submit their qualifications to the city. And then it will be annually at the end of the year, the end of December going forward, to be qualified for the next year. We do not have to update your fee schedule, because it is just cross-reference to the fee schedule. And I think that's most of it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
You said April thirtieth for the first year and December after that. So will we allow another period at the end of this year, and will it stay April thirtieth?
Yes, it'll be, well, well, this, or twenty twenty five, since, you know, we didn't, weren't able to do anything in twenty twenty four, we're allowing the next two months essentially. And then we will be accepting applications for twenty twenty six until the end of December this year.
Okay.
And there will be a, you know, an application window.
Right.
So we rely on the third party's word that they're good, or they have a certificate?
They have to submit inspection reports, which will then be reviewed by our inspectors to ensure that they are compliant. And then part of why they, there is a registration and a set list of approved inspection companies is so, because we are able to kind of review and have an idea ahead of time that they, they conduct to the standard.
So they will be inspected.
Yes, yes, we will inspect the inspections.
Want to make sure there's not a good old boy relationship between them and the developer.
Exactly, yes, no, they have to submit reports and documentation.
And the, the reason for a third-party inspection, just from a, I guess, the city's perspective, is to provide more capacity?
Well, so the, the state already requires that we accept it, but we cannot assess the permitting fees without having an ordinance ourselves that outlines that process and kind of codifies it within your ordinances. So, I, I mean, if a developer chooses to do it on their own without us not being able to meet that forty-eight hour deadline, it's usually because it's part of just their process that they, they already have. They probably partner with somebody who conducts the inspections for them, and it just allows them to stay on, on their schedule, rather than relying on us. As far as we go right now, we are at about that two-day schedule, but that should drop as, as the permit influx reduces.
So most of the time, our expectation would be that we should be able to fulfill our time commitment?
Yes.
If they chose to go a different route, then there's kind of a.
The premium, yeah.
So, okay, got it.
A lot of times you'll see this, if it's like a larger subdivision that's going in, and they'll do all the trust work, all the rough inspections at once. So then the staff will be able to go through and do half of it, but they may get the other half if they can continue to move with subdivision.
Thanks.
No problem. Any other questions?
Any other questions from the council? All right, that will conclude the first read of ordinance twenty twenty five zero two one thirty seven. First read of amendments to the Building and Building Regulations Ordinance, Chapter ten, editing and adding certain provisions related to third-party inspections. The second item there is ordinance, the first read of ordinance twenty twenty five zero two one thirty eight, an ordinance to establish an occupational tax cap. Riley, you want to talk about this? You want me to talk about it?
Do what you need.
Why don't you go ahead and, and just explain what it is, if I need to fill in, I will.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The, the county has a cap on their occupational tax certificates, and it caps at twenty thousand dollars. We don't have, we have maybe one, perhaps two, that would exceed that, but of course, it did pop up. And they, they immediately said that it's gone up in price. Everybody said that all, it would all remain the same. We reviewed that. We reviewed that, we reviewed the county's cap, we presented, we prepared the ordinance for you, go to emulate or to, to copy the cap that the county has, that would keep us in the same place as the, as the commercial establishments had with the county that they would have with the city, and they wouldn't see an increase in their occupational tax certificate, so we modified the county's twenty thousand cap.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, Mayor, come in.
Sure.
Um, you said we adopted the county's occupational tax structure to begin with.
We did.
How did the cap get left off?
Uh, they had a, they passed a cap separately.
Okay, gotcha.
Separately, separately passed cap, same thing happened, I believe, in Duluth.
Okay.
Duluth went back and, and that, and managed the cap to, to conform it to the way the cap is.
And we're proposing to pass the same cap, twenty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Um, I, you may not know the answer to this, I could be wrong, but many other cities have a higher cap than twenty thousand dollars. Are you aware of that, or if they're the norm, other cities, Gwinnett County, similar-sized cities, anything like that?
At this point in time, that we, of, we were trying to maintain the same structure that everybody had expected at the point in time, but they, the, the charter was passed.
Gotcha, okay, fair enough.
And I want to be clear too, for those that are listening or maybe watching at home, is that this only affects very few businesses in the city. I mean, this is, these are businesses that do multiple millions of dollars, right? And so, when you, when you pay your occupational taxes, there are sometimes, or it's, it's determined based on your gross revenues, right? And so in order to reach this twenty thousand dollar cap, I mean, you have to be well into the millions of dollars, and so what this would do is it would, just for those couple businesses, it would, it would sustain kind of the promises that were made when we established the city, that hey, you're not going to pay any more than you did with Gwinnett County, and so this would basically keep us in line with that, even for these multinational corporations that are, that are within the city limits for, for occupational taxes.
Will that be effective for this year?
I believe so, correct?
Yes.
Yes, it would be effective this year, yes.
Okay.
And like I said, most of these, these are not your mom-and-pop businesses, these are businesses that are usually national corporations that do business within our city limits.
And there's maybe two that we have now.
There's a couple, yeah, 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 so. Um, okay, that will conclude. Any other questions? I'm sorry, or discussion?
Uh, I, I have a couple, if I may, just, just because I know with the annexation and, and what we're trying to do and so on and so forth, the, the revenue, so the calculation methodology on occupational tax is, so we're talking about twenty-five million-ish is where that twenty thousand cap would be, is that right? Does anybody know?
Mr. Riley, you have any idea when that cap would come into play?
It's not right.
Twenty million, I guess?
So, twenty to twenty-five million, you said?
I'd say twenty-five to thirty million.
Twenty-five to thirty million is what he said, is when that cap would come into play.
Okay, so just, um.
And that, and that does depend on the tax class, that particular business might, might be, I guess, on their name, classified, so.
Right.
It could, it could be different for different businesses.
Gotcha, okay. Um, understood, I, I don't want to provide any further, but I think there's, the, the only thing I would say is that with, with a very small group of businesses and with our allocation in, in the city as it is today, from a residential versus a commercial perspective, I would be intrigued, at least interested, let's say, to take a look at some of the other municipalities that might look similar to us and see where they have used a cap. Primary reason being, Gwinnett County has a number of tax vehicles from which to utilize to, you know, take care of the cost structures and that.
And, and to your point, I have, I have done some research of some of the other cities, there are, there are many cities that have adopted Gwinnett County same cap of twenty thousand, but to the
Large ones, I think.
Yeah, but to the Mayor Protem's point, there are certain cities that have, have raised that, some larger than others. I've seen ranges from forty thousand up to eighty-five thousand, just different, different ranges, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions before we move on? All right, that will conclude the first read of ordinance twenty twenty-five zero two one thirty-eight. The next item on the agenda is item N, which is an executive session. Mr. Riley, do you feel the need for litigation to go on executive session today?
No, I don't.
Okay, then I will make a motion to remove the executive session from tonight's agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll give it a third.
All right, somebody seconded that. Okay, then, call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, the executive session is hereby removed. Ladies and gentlemen, that is all the items we have for this evening. I want to thank, we had a great turnout tonight.